Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the City Council to order for Monday, September 19th, 2022. We're going to begin with prayer from Pastor James Smith from We Stand for Christ Jesus Ministries Church.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank God for the opportunity to City Council to be able to give this prayer. Let's bow our heads. Father God, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for your grace and mercy on our lives, our loved ones' lives. Lord, we ask that this meeting, that you touch the men and women here who's making decisions concerning our city, Lord, concerning the people of Kankakee. Lord, touch your hearts, touch your minds. Let them make decisions that's wise with wisdom, Lord, that only comes from you. Father, help them to make wise decisions for our city. Lord, we know that the winter is coming. We have homeless issue here in Kankakee. Let them consider that. Bless the people that's here, Lord. Keep an edge of protection around our officers, our fire department, the men and women, the young people here. Lord, let us be an instrument in helping contain the violence here, Lord, in our city, drugs and alcohol. Let us do our part individually as well as collectively. Father, we know that we need you, and we need your Spirit to be in us to help others. So, Father, we ask this in your Son, Jesus mighty name. Amen.
I'm going to ask if the students from the Bishop McNamara School, if you would come forward to help us with Fledge of Allegiance. If you want to come up here, we'll... I'll have you come all the way up top here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is item four, and that is public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal tax upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Larry Yates. If you can come on up to the microphone.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Okay. I had already talked to Lance Marzett, okay, in regards to this Allied waste, or the public who had picked up the yard waste. Are they supposed to keep garbage and yard waste separate?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, but they don't do it. I watch them all the time pick up my yard waste, my garbage, same truck. Neighbors, same truck. And usually when they don't pick up, I call them, I get the same excuse, truck broke down, or they're two cars behind. Okay, well, usually done by nine o'clock, I'm calling you at one o'clock. Sometimes about four o'clock, I see two trucks go by, and I keep calling them that the block I live on, we don't have an alley, so everything is up on the street. And every time, then I call them about a yard waste can. Oh, we don't give out yard waste cans. My neighbors got one, the sisters got one, what used to be a group home, they had four. And Chris, who was the driver, I said, Chris, on his shirt, he said, oh, take one. But no, because somebody lived there now. And I said, I really need labels to put on my garbage can.
We can get those, so the yard waste cans, you can rent them from Allied, or if you just get a label, you can use any garbage can. I believe the clerk's office at the City Council does have a...
Right. I have all the garbage can with labels on them, but sometimes they would reach out and grab it. They would reach out with that clamp and grab it, but after a while, you know, Gorilla Tape couldn't hold my garbage can together anymore, so I went and bought a new one. I asked Chris about it, if he had a label. He checked, he said, no. I said, okay, what about the guy that picks up the garbage, the yard waste? He said, no, he don't. He said, why? I said, well, I need a label for my garbage can. And he said, well, we give out yard waste cans. I said, no, you don't, because I've called, and she keeps saying we don't give those out. He got out of the truck, made a phone call, the next day, yard waste can. So, I want to know whether I've been paying for a yard waste can, but never got one.
You'd have to look at your bill, because that would be charged to your bill if you're paying for that on an annual basis.
Well, I've been, before Aqua left town, when this began on Skyler, I kept telling them, these guys are not picking up. I gave them three strikes. When they did again, I divided three into the bill. I didn't pay $12.09. I told them why, and every time they do it, I'm going to subtract from their bill. So, they keep saying, I already brought the copy, they keep saying $12.09 remaining, paying from last bill. So, I sent another note to them. If the CEO or any board member don't like it, you got my address. Come on by.
Next is Mr. Robert Ellington Snipes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Today, I don't speak as a county commissioner. I speak as a taxpayer and a property owner. What is the purpose of home rule? The purpose of home rule is to allow for local solutions to local issues and problems. A municipality with home rule status can exercise any power and perform any function unless it is specifically prohibited from doing so by state law. A home rule status can be achieved in one of two ways. A municipality automatically achieves some, achieve home rule status when its population exceeds 25,000 residents. If the municipality's population falls below this threshold, it continues to be home rule, but the clerk is required to certify the question for submission of home rule to the voters at the next general election. On Tuesday, November 8th, you decide whether the city remains home rule or not. State law requires the city to ask the voters via referendum. Home rule does not. Since 1970, this city has had home rule powers. That's 52 years to date. So, what benefits of home rule have been bestowed upon the taxpayers of this city? I'm glad you ask. The vehicles stickered to you tax was implemented under home rule authority. The additional $10 a month or $120 a year, uh, community policing tax was implemented under home rule. You remember, that tax was implemented to provide community policing in your respective neighborhoods. In its initial stages, police were walking your neighborhoods, some were riding bikes, knocking on your doors just to say hello. And as soon as the campaign was over, so was the community policing. You were stuck with a monthly fee on your sewage and garbage bill. In essence, 1.5 to 2 million additional dollars are being involuntarily donated to the city coffers from hardworking taxpayer pocketbooks. Let's not mention the city's code enforcement department that pours into the city's general fund like water without a shut-off valve. In a nutshell, home rule is not being effectively utilized as it was intended. We have no voice. The city of Kankakee pimps the pocketbooks of your already limited income by using you as their personal ATM machines. Think about it, people. What have we accomplished from 52 years of promises made but not kept? Things that make you go hmm. 52 years under home rule has turned our hard-earned dollars into a money-burning crematory for the city of Kankakee. While we dodged bullets to get into our homes, spent countless dollars in vehicle repairs from the ever-increasing potholes, not to mention all the other taxation the city gets from your water bill, sewage and garbage bill, electric bill, your gas bill, your cable bill, your phone bill, your cell phone bill, and your property tax. 52 years to get it right, and now 52 years later, the city politicians want to aggressively campaign to make you believe home rule is in your best interest, but fail to campaign in your respective neighborhoods against crime that makes you a prisoner in your own home. What? Home rule doesn't exist in Bradley, but Bonus, Matina, or Miss Hersher, Norton, Otto, or even the county of Kankakee. They must place a referendum on the ballot and ask the people permission to tax them, and the city of Kankakee should do, be of no session, period. In essence, the city politicians are telling you, we don't trust you, but trust us. Vote yes to end this Halloween home rule nightmare on the backs of the taxpayer's pocketbooks. Vote yes to tell these city politicians that you will not use my pocketbook like a personal ATM to balance your extravagant budgets, live within your means. To confuse you, the question on the ballot is phrased that if you vote no, you're voting yes for home rule, but if you vote yes, you're voting no to home rule. You must vote yes to vote no to home rule. Your pocketbooks will thank you later. Caveat enter. Let the voters beware.
Next is Stephanie Gower. Good night. I apologize if I said your last name wrong, so...
No, it's correct.
Thank you.
Hi. I just have a few questions regarding Westside Tavern. There's been numerous noise complaints. They are partying Wednesday through Saturday now. I have patrons that come out of the bar, urinate on my yard, they park on my yard, they block my driveway. We can't get in and out of our house sometimes. I have two young children that are afraid to be home on those nights because they say that they don't feel safe, and I'm just wondering what can be done. Essentially, this is seeming like a nuisance to me, and what can be done with this bar?
We, I will say this, normally we don't comment, but there is a meeting that is coming this week. We addressed it this morning with the police department and the alderman, and there is a meeting that is being set up for this week to discuss it with everyone. Carol Duffield.
Good evening. I'm also here about the, I live at 450 South Main, a block and a half south of West Side. I have lived there 39 years. Larry used to live in my neighborhood. I have never seen such a travesty in my entire life. That place is nothing but, it's a brawl at night. There was a police officer across the street, supposedly, he said he was just there to babysit. These, oh, thanks, Lance. These people are incorrigible. I don't know what else to say. I know that Larry and Dave both drove by there Saturday night, and they could not believe what happened. I had a friend that came from Bondale. She went to Court Street. She lives in Bradley, but she went to Court Street because she wanted to go to Wendy's to get something to eat. When she got to Court Street, she said she was petrified. She said it was that bad. Cars racing up and down, they're in Carlos parking lot, just, I guess it's called parking lot pimping, is what it's called now. I, it's from some rapper's song or something like that. They're drinking, they're dancing in their cars, they're boom, they're going the boom ba booms. I don't even know. I mean, it's outrageous. I live a block and a half south of there, and I can hear it. I went out and looked. I finally called 911 on Saturday night, and she said, well, I'll send an officer over. I said, hell, you better send a gaggle of officers over. I said, it is out of control down there. I just went in front of my house, and you could see cars all over. They were, from what I understand, there was a lot of calls between Westside and Jensen's for whatever happened Saturday night, I guess was the heaviest calls. I'm not sure what the amount was. They tried to find out for me, and I couldn't find out in time. But it is out of control. There's something needs to be done. Number two is Jeremy Robinson has Carloses there. Why are these people being allowed to just do what they want to do with Carloses parking lot? Jeremy needs to step up to the plate, too. The police department needs to step up to the plate, and this bar owner needs to step up to the plate. This just can't go on like this. I've lived there 39 years. I've never seen this happen. You know, I've gone to Westside myself. I mean, we used to frequent the bar. No way on God's earth would I go there now. It's horrific. And I want, something has to be done. I know you're going to meet with people and everything else. I know that from talking to my alderman, but it just, it can't go on like this. It's that bad. You should, take, I know you took a drive past my neighbor's house. He said he has a garage door. Take a pass, take a drive past there at about 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock on a Friday or Saturday night, see what's going on. They did it, and they were amazed. They, I've been after them for two years on this, and they were just absolutely amazed at what happened there. And it can't go on. For the safety of the neighborhood, it cannot go on. Thank you.
Okay. We are going to item 5A, and that is roll call. City Council?
Brown.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson. Crawford. Osinga.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Present.
Prude.
Here.
13 present, one absent.
We do have a quorum. Item 5B, department heads.
Bass Waters.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Figash.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Bertrand.
Present.
Hoffman.
Present.
Roswell.
Here.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on to item six, we do have a couple of resolutions tonight honoring a couple of different things, and those are currently 13A and 13B. Is it the consent to the council to amend the agenda and move items 13A and B to item 8G and H? We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Is there any questions or comments? We'll be moving items 13A and B to item 8G and H in the agenda. Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye. 13I zero nays.
Okay. Agenda is amended. Next, we have item six, and that is the minutes from Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye. 13I zero nays.
Minutes are approved. Item seven is petitions. We have none. Next is item eight, communications. Item 8A.
Item A is a presentation by the Kankakee Fire Department introducing new firefighters, John Romando, Kevin Smith, and Nick Klosikowski.
If the firefighters would come forward, and Chief LaRoche.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I'd like to introduce three of our firefighters, starting with Kevin Smith. Kevin Smith comes to us from our internship program. Kevin is 22 years old. He's a citizen of Kankakee. He's a firefighter EMT. He just started his paramedic class at KCC, and we wish him well in his career. Next, we have John Romando. John comes to us from Hersher. He's 28 years old. He's married and has three kids. He has got 10 years of active duty service with the Marines with multiple deployments. He currently is a National Guard, serves in the National Guard. He starts the academy in October, and then after the academy, he'll start his paramedic class in January. He's also the proud son of Sergeant, retired Sergeant John Romando from Kankakee Police Department. Our last, but not least firefighter is Nick Klosikowski. He's 33 years old. He lives in Mokina. He's an EMT paramedic. He's been in the fire service for three years, and before he was a firefighter, he was a boilermaker, and has some experience in confined space. Wish them all well and a long career of firefighters.
Item B is a presentation by the Kankakee Police Department introducing new officer Marcus Harris.
Marcus, do you want to come up here? Everyone, this is Marcus Harris. Marcus grew up in Chicago, went to school, graduated high school in moments, then went to KCC as an associate's degree from KCC, worked at Riverside Hospital for a little while, worked at St. Mary's Hospital for a little while, and then at the county jail, was on the Alito Police Department, which is over in western Illinois, and then later rolled over to us. Started September 7th, and we're happy to have him, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the department. Thank you, Marcus. Let's get your, let's get your wife. Your girl, fiance. I'm sorry, fiance. Marcus is getting married on Saturday. You all are invited to the wedding. Your daughter's name is Adeline, is that right? Adeline, okay.
Is it the consent of the council to combine items 8C, D, E, and F?
So moved.
So, I have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, and a second from Alderman Prude to combine items 8C, D, E, and F. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13I zero nays.
Okay. Clerk, if you'd read in items 8C, D, E, and F, please.
Item C is We Stand for Christ Jesus Ministries at 1230 Southeast Avenue is requesting a noise permit to host the Love of Christ Gospel Revival on Friday, September 30th, 2022, from 5:30 PM until 8:30 PM, and Saturday, October 1st, 2022, from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM, with rain dates on Friday, October 7th, 2022, and Saturday, October 8th, 2022, at the same times. Item D is the neighbors of the 900 block of South Myrtle Avenue are requesting permission to host a block party on Saturday, September 24th, from 3:00 PM until 6:00 PM. Item E, Kiwanis Club, is requesting permission to host their Peanut Tag Day on Friday, September 30th, 2022. And item F, Kankakee County Renewed Opportunity, is requesting permission to host a tag day on Friday, October 14th, 2022.
Is there a motion to, for the approval of items 8C, D, E, and F? We have a motion from Alderman Brown.
Second.
And we have a second from Alderman Prude. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13I zero nays.
Okay. We have those approval. Next is item 8G.
A resolution of honorary street designation of the 800 block of North Washington Avenue as honorary James H. Stokes Jr. Way.
May I ask the family of former Alderman Stokes to come forward, and Chief LaRoche, would you like to come forward with us?
All the way up. All the way up. I know you get all nervous. Can't two-step up. You gotta take one more step.
I can scoot a little bit further.
There you go. Just one more. There you go. Take another step up. You gotta take another step up. That's the problem. I got stepped up there.
Okay. I'm going to read the resolution for the honorary designation of the 800 block of North Washington Avenue, honorary James H. Stokes Jr. Way. Whereas James, Jim, Mr. Action Stokes Jr., a 40-year member of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, was a very respected and distinguished gentleman who resided in the City of Kankakee from 1958 until his death on June 29th, 2022. He was a graduate of Kankakee Eastridge High School, where he was an All-American football player. Upon graduation, Jim became an EMT and later a Kankakee firefighter. And whereas Mr. Stokes was dedicated to the Kankakee firefighting community, during his career, Stokes served under 10 fire chiefs and five city administrations. He called the department "the best fire department in the whole wide world." Mr. Stokes was known to be the person who gave it everything he's got, and who could be depended on to help other firefighters. Upon his 2021 retirement, Mr. Stokes is praised for his work ethic, as well as his dedication and commitment to our city council. And whereas Mr. Stokes was a dedicated representative of the City of Kankakee, Mr. Stokes was elected a second ward alderman and served for four years by diligently ensuring the city's resources were used to their fullest potential. The city and the community benefited from his hard work, and whereas Mr. Stokes significantly contributed to the City of Kankakee by helping the youth of our community. He founded and ran the not-for-profit Kankakee Kids in Action youth program that impacted thousands of teens in our community. Mr. Stokes, who was fondly called Mr. Action, was often seen throughout the community during his off-duty hours, raking leaves, sweeping sidewalks, cutting grass, and picking up trash with city youngsters who were part of the program. He also drove a school bus, ensuring the safety of children. Therefore, it be resolved by Mayor Christopher W. Curtis and the City Council of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, to hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to designate the 800 Block of North Washington Avenue as honorary James H. Stokes Jr. Way. His dedication to the city of Kankakee is the legacy which remains to this day, adopted this nineteenth day of September of 2022.
Is there a motion by the city council for the passage of this resolution?
So moved.
We're going to take that as a unanimous motion, and a unanimous second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is passed. Chief LaRoche, speak a few words, if you don't mind, a little bit, but I do want to sit there and say that, you know, Mr. Stokes, from my understanding, spent a majority of his career at this firehouse, most of his life, and I'll let Chief LaRoche talk about that. I do want to speak, I did say I have the honor of serving with Alderman Stokes when I was an alderman, along with many other people here. Mr. Stokes was one of those people that a lot of times you had disagreements with, or you had things, but I'm going to tell you one thing, he cared about the city of Kankakee. He always wanted to find out what he thought was best, and so for that, everyone had the utmost respect for everything that he did, because why sometimes you sit there and say maybe passion is construed as difficulty, not in this case. He was just trying to do what he thought was best for the city of Kankakee as an alderman. As a firefighter to be for forty-plus years, you just don't see that anymore. Most people don't even think about getting to thirty years, let alone forty. So, his dedication with his Kids in Action, with his serving on the firefighting force, serving as an elected official, there is no doubt that you can't sit there and say that Mr. James Stokes Jr. gave it his all, everything, and his heart to the city of Kankakee.
I just want to thank his family for coming out, and for all the firefighters and the fact that served with James over the years. James was a unique individual, he was very, had a lot of tenacity, very, he was very determined, and he did a very good job, put his heart into it, his soul into it, and he believed truly in being there for the citizens of Kankakee. It was my pleasure, and I'm proud to say that I worked with him, and I got to know his family.
Anybody from the family like to speak?
I'm the crybaby, I'm the crybaby, but I just want to say thank you. My dad, like, this is amazing, like, I don't know, just twenty-nine years later, for me, this is awesome, my dad is a superhero. I just want to say thank you guys so much, and I love everybody.
I just want to say thank you guys for coming out, showing support. And I'd also like to give thanks for even giving my dad a chance to be on the street, send all love, and thanks from my family, thank you.
This sign is for you to take with the family, and then we will have the sign put up in the coming days here, so, thank you, everyone. Okay, next we're going to do item eight H.
And that is a resolution honoring Bishop McNamara Catholic School on the celebration of its one-hundredth year anniversary.
If we could have the representatives and the students for Bishop McNamara come forward?
Okay, I'm going to read a resolution honoring Bishop McNamara Catholic School on the celebration of its one-hundredth year anniversary. Whereas during the 2022-2023 academic year, Bishop McNamara Catholic School is celebrating its one-hundredth year anniversary as a school deeply rooted in faith, tradition, and education. The school, which was known as St. Patrick High School in 1922, St. Patrick Central High School in 1956, and Bishop McNamara High School in 1965 until 2018, is a regionalized Catholic school in Kankakee County, and a cornerstone of the city of Kankakee academic community. And whereas the school roots, the school's roots date back to 1922, when the Sisters of Loretta, and later the Vitorian Catholic Priests, opened and ran the school to service the St. Patrick's Catholic community. Vitorians served as teachers, coaches, and administrators for more than fifty years, and touched the lives of countless students and their families. And whereas Bishop McNamara Catholic School is dedicated to maximizing the potential of their students' spirituality, morally, morality, maybe, and intellectually, through a faith-based community and academic excellence in service to others. The school prepares students for kindergarten, junior high, high school, college, and beyond. They do this by living their motto, "Choose to be more." And whereas nearly ten thousand graduates have experienced the academic excellence, faith formation, and meaningful traditions that the school has to offer. The school, which takes pride in Irish tradition, celebrates its one-hundredth year in Catholic identity as one God, one mission, one school, one family, and now one hundred years. Therefore, it be resolved by Mayor Christopher W. Curtis and the City Council of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, to recognize and celebrate with Bishop McNamara Catholic School, as it celebrates one hundred years of faith, tradition, and education, adopted this nineteenth day of September 2022.
Is there a motion for approval of this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sounds like we have a unanimous consent there, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bishop McNamara, we appreciate you, a hundred years is a long time for anything, especially for a school. We're honored that you have the students here tonight. I know you have a lot of celebrations going on throughout the year. It started earlier with the painting of the shamrocks along the entrance to the school. I know you've coming off your homecoming week, which you had a lot of extra celebrations, and there's a lot more to come through the winter months and into the spring here, so as a alumni, I guess, I would say, a graduate of Bishop McNamara High School, we have several other aldermen that are the same, on behalf of the city council of the city of Kankakee, we thank you for everything that you do provide for the city, for the region, and for the area, and we wish you another hundred years, and can't thank you enough for being here tonight, so, thank you so much.
I'd just like to say thank you on behalf of the faculty, staff, and administration, and of course, our students, for your support throughout these years, especially last week, as we had quite a few celebrations for our homecoming. So we, again, thank you for all the support, it's a true honor and pleasure to be part of the city of Kankakee, so thank you.
We are now going to move on to item nine, and that is standing committees, item nine A. That is the license to franchise report for Thursday, September 8th, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Osenga?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a quorum that night, and we also had several guests at the meeting, that's some of the information we're going to be talking about here. We had no public comments, we approved amendments from our August 4th meeting by unanimous vote. Under old business, we had Classic Cinema come to the committee in August, they were requesting a liquor license to sell alcoholic beverages inside the theater during a movie. They would be selling beer, wine, and mixed drinks. Committee members asked for more time to review this, so they had that a month, and they came back at this meeting, and after some discussion, it was voted unanimously to approve a liquor license for the Classic Cinema. Legal will be looking at this, so we make sure we give them the proper liquor license and possibly create a new one. Under new business, this was interesting, we have to redraw the ward boundary based on the 2020 census. Each alderman was asked to look at their wards and come up with possible respective changes in their boundaries. After some discussion, it was decided that Mr. Hoffman there would take on this challenge and try and put together the proper information for future reference, and we will be meeting on that, I believe, tomorrow, tomorrow at 5:30 in the city council. We had no need for an executive session, and our meeting adjourned at 6:15 PM. And our next meeting will be October 6th at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Next is item 10, report of officers. Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the city of Kankakee in an amount of $650,155.46?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers, place the money in the proper account, and pay the bills in the amount of $650,155.46.
Do we have a second? We have a second for Alderman Cobb's. Is there any questions or comments about the bills? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis. Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I would abstain as to check, the checks to Piggish Engineering, which are 79851 and 3345, and the check to Gordon Electric, check number 3373 to avoid a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the city of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10B, the report of officers for environmental services utility in an amount of $669,845.29. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osenga, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Prue. Any questions or comments about the bills from environmental services utility? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I would abstain as to check 32443 to Barron Hewitt Oil, 32461 to Gordon Electric Supply, and 32475 to Kankakee Truck Equipment.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for environmental services utility is approved. We'll now move on to item 11, unfinished business, item 11A.
An ordinance authorizing and promulgating a policy for the sale of certain city-owned vacant residential parcels and approving a form agreement and deed for the conveyance thereof.
This motion was, this ordinance was tabled at the July 18th meeting. Is there a desire of city council at this point to act on this?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we untable the motion.
We have a, we have a motion from Alderman Cobb's to untable this, untable this ordinance for passage.
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on second reading for passage?
So moved, Mayor.
So we had a motion from Alderman Cobb's, is there a second? There was a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments about this ordinance? I believe we have the exhibits correct that have removed items, parcels, vacant parcels that we don't want to sell. And again, I believe it's now set up that any, any sale of any property still will have to come through council, so even if there is an issue in the future that we think changes, or we need to do something with, council will still have the ability to act on that, so.
That's my understanding.
And the ECDA team will, will help coordinate these efforts of this moving forward. Alderman Barron?
Mayor, I just wanted to comment, and thank you for giving us the time to go through and figure out these procedures and everything. I, I think this is a great program, I continue to get calls from people that are interested in this program, so I think that it is going to benefit us and our community pretty greatly.
And I hope, thank you, Alderman Barron, I hope when we move forward with these, the land bank will be working on a lot of properties that the city does not control, that we can get through and do a similar situation through the land bank. The ultimate goal of this is to get these parcels and improvements back on the tax rolls, and get them out of the maintenance of our Department of Public Works, so they have time and ability to do a lot of other things that they can do for us as residents. So, I think it's a win-win. It'll also stabilize the neighborhoods, I believe, and it will help with a lot of different things, so, appreciate everyone moving forward on this. Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 11B.
An ordinance authorizing and promulgating a policy for the sale of certain city-owned improved parcels.
This, this ordinance also was tabled on July 18th, is there action from the council on this?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we untable this ordinance.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's to untable the ordinance, is there a second? We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance for second reading and passage?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson, any questions or comments about this one? This is the improved properties. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 11C.
Consideration and action on an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $98,900,000 of taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2022, for the purpose of funding all or a portion of the unfunded liability of the city's police and firefighter pension funds. A budget stabilization fund for such unfunded liability, the pledge to the payment of said bonds of the annual revenues to be received by the city from its home sales tax, the levy and collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
This ordinance is on second reading, is there a motion for approval? This ordinance is on second reading. Is there a motion for approval? So I didn't catch who was the first. We have a motion from Alderman Crawford. We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions or comments? I believe at the last meeting, it was explained from legal, the purpose of this, this is basically to make sure that we direct the 2% sales taxes collected and we're in place to use for the payment of the bonds. Alderman Barron.
Mayor, there is quite a bit of misinformation about what home rule allows and what it doesn't. Does this action depend on home rule? Do we, do we require to have home rule to take a step with this?
Yes. Because of the amount, correct? Legal?
Correct. I think I understand the question correctly. The ordinance having that, which is a change to allocate those sales tax.
So if we did not have home rule, we could not take this action?
We could take this action, but not the bonds.
I mean, if you didn't have home rule correct, you would not be able to take it in a way that's like time, but.
Okay.
If that ain't your question, or is that clear as mud?
Like many things. No, I mean, it's, no, that's, that's great.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 11D.
Consideration and action on an ordinance amending and restating ordinance 2018-10, an ordinance for home rule municipal reach coverage occupation tax and home rule municipal service occupation tax of the city of Kankakee.
This is on second reading. This is amending the ordinance that was created when we created 2% sales tax. This now will amend that ordinance that makes the number one position that any 2% sales collection will first go to make sure we service the debt of the bonds. And then the remaining three items that we had on there, three or four items, will follow in order from there, so. Is there a motion for approval? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Any questions or comments about this amendment of the ordinance? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 12A, under new business.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at 328 South Lincoln Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Barron. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ornament, ordinance on final reading for passage? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Barron. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. There are no appointments tonight. We'll move on to item 13C, under motions and resolutions.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2022 tank, 1,000 gallon skid mount from Hamilton Equipment, Inc., for the amount of $24,000, and a 2022 CMP giraffe hatcher from Alta Equipment Company for the amount of $82,299.60 for use by the Department of Public Works.
This, this resolution was unanimously agreed out of the Environmental Services Committee for recommendation to City Council for approval. If you're not aware of this, this is a machine that basically allows to tar and chip our streets, alleys. What it's really great at is instead of cold patching and hot patching some potholes, where you have the spidering that comes out from those potholes when the water gets in there and makes potholes larger, this has ability to not be a permanent fix, but at least take it to two to three years, possibly four years, until that street needs an overlay. It'll stop the potholes from growing. It'll prevent some of the spidering that's happening in parking lots and streets. It works fairly quickly, and you can drive on it within five to 10 minutes after it's laid down. You see it a lot of times on the township roads or county roads. They'll use this out there. This was a demonstration was given to Department of Public Works about 60 days ago. I joke a little bit with them. It were a little bit like kids at Christmas because they saw how effective this was. It only uses probably two employees to use this instead of more. It can be used pretty much anytime, probably about four months a year when it's too cold, it'll have to be put away. But the total cost of this with the tank is $106,299.60. They have one that is on hold for us that we would be able to have within a week, maybe as soon as this week. And then Department of Public Works would like to be able to use this right up to hopefully December through some of the, before the cold weather sits in and get some of the work done on some areas that are needed most. I think this is a solution that'll allow us to get more work done with our cities and sidewalks. We're going to pay for this out of ESU capital. We do have a line item budget in ESU capital, $500,000. This will be coming out of that payment that's allocated in this fiscal year. Is there a motion for approval of a resolution to purchase this equipment?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga.
Second.
And we have a second from Alderman Prude. Is there any questions or comments?
I think that was Marzak.
What's that?
That was Marzak.
That's fine.
He made the motion.
Oh, hang on. Are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Sorry. Did you, did you make the motion and I said it wrong?
Same time.
We're gonna, we're gonna go with Alderman Osinga, and we're gonna go with Alderman Prude, so. Okay, with that said. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien. Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays.
Resolution's passed. I think Mr. Lopez is anxious. He might go tonight to get it. No, I'm just kidding, so. He's got paperwork over there ready for signature, so. I think this will be a very valuable tool for the city of Kankakee and help address a lot of concerns of the residents within your wards, so. We'll just have to be patient because I'm sure everybody's got lots of things that need to be fixed, and we'll get to everybody, so. I think Alderman Brown used his seniority to get first, though, but.
No, no, no.
All right, next is item 13D.
Resolution authorizing the city of Kankakee to apply for the open space lands acquisition and development OSLET grant for the East River Walk project.
Okay, this is, this has to do with some funding that has opened up. I'm going to let, who wants to go with this? Mr. Pigish or Mr. Hoffman? Mr. Pigish? You want to talk about what we're applying for here?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Or should it be Mr.? Have I got a better?
It doesn't matter. Doesn't matter to me either way. The Department of Natural Resources puts out an OSLET grant opportunity every year for parks and other open space projects. This year, the city was on the, on the list for, I can't remember the specific language, but basically distressed communities list, sorry. The city has flipped between being on and off that list. There are advantages in this grant opportunity to being on that list, one of which is we are able to apply for $600,000 and not have to put up a match. We are currently proposing a $1.2 million project because you do get extra points for putting up matched money for the East River, portions of the East River Walk improvement, so. The harbor, the cantilever to overlook, the native garden, the pavilion, the kayak landing, and the accessible kayak portage and the ramp down to that are what we've specified in the project scope as part of this project to get the most amount of points because they do score it based on recreation, so. So this opportunity is due on September 30th, and this resolution is a requirement of that grant opportunity.
We're looking for a motion for the passage of the resolution to authorize the city of Kankakee to apply for this OSLET grant. We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for executive session tonight, so I need a motion to go into executive session for 5ILCS 122C11, pending or imminent litigation, and 5ILCS 122.6D for review of executive session minutes tonight. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien. Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 i's, zero nays. Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to go back into open session? We have a motion from Alderman Navarez.
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lamone Marshall, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one.
We're back in open session and do have a form. We do have action resulting from the executive session, item sixteen one. It is a resolution approving the content of certain city council closed session meeting minutes and authorizing the retention of certain city council closed session meeting minutes. There's our motion for approval of this resolution. So move.
Second.
Right, maybe it's the first. Well, we have a first from Alderman Marzak, we have a second from Alderman Cobb. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay, resolution passes. Next is item seventeen, city council member comments. Alderman Navarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to everybody that participated in the Hispanic Heritage celebrations. We had a great time. I want to thank David Guzman, the mayor, for helping us put this together and everybody that participated. So this is the second year, third year's coming, and I think we're going to be better next year, hopefully. Thank you.
Alderman Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'll start with the ordinance committee will be canceled for the twenty-seventh of September due to waiting for a couple legal up to do on the different ordinances. And then we will be meeting October twenty-fifth at five-thirty for a full ordinance meeting following month. And then I'll make a comment on what was going over on the west side of town this weekend. Meet me Larry Ozenga, they've been having some issues over there, so we drove over there ourselves around eleven o'clock at night. There were probably well over two hundred cars parked out in parking lots, streets for a couple blocks. People standing outside drinking and smoking, partying in the streets, partying in the L.A.'s. Something needs to be done. We're going to hold a meeting with all the bar owners on Thursday at two o'clock. So hopefully we'll have everybody in one room and we'll get something figured out because this. Then also I'd like to thank Public Works. They've had their hands full here with a couple of storms. They did a really great job with all of the activities that were going on this week. They had the summer fest going on, Spanish fest going on and everything. They helped them get set up and everything tore down, broke down and cleaned up by the time we came to work on Monday. So great job, Mr. Lopez.
Mayor.
Alderman Prue.
Yeah, I just continue to invite everybody this week, we have our back-to-school bash. I want to thank all the Aldermans that already have given donations toward it. We invite all you all to come out and support our event. It starts at two o'clock on Saturday, that's two to six o'clock. So again, I just want to thank everybody for participating, all those that gave. At O'Fair Park.
And you said that starts at two o'clock, correct?
Two o'clock, yes.
Alderman Cobb.
Yeah, economic development will be moved to the twenty-ninth here in the chambers at five-thirty.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Chief LaRoche for sharing the brochures on the Explorer program. Is it possible to get this in an electronic version that we could forward to people as well? I think this is very good explanation of the program and hopefully it attracts some more recruits. Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Location for that meeting for the bar owners? Got a location down yet?
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday, but we're going to have two Aldermen there, I believe, so we have a... What's the name? We got the, careful, the Open Meetings Act. Is this something you want to attend?
No, no, no.
Oh, if we want to attend it, we need to get a notice out by tomorrow then, if we're going to do that.
Right, because I just want to make sure whatever goes on, I mean, it's happening there, but we've got a couple that we need to make.
Whatever happens at this meeting, we're going to have to spread it out through the whole community. We may leave one place and go to somewhere else.
That's all I was thinking, like, wait a minute, that's what was going on, going on part of it. And one more thing, I'm very proud of the city again. Thank you for, the city for James Stokes' presentation, I liked it, I liked it. Appreciate it.
Alderman Osenga.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to the police department for a job well done. I believe this past week they were successful in clearing three homicides, and one of them was, I believe, from two fif- twenty fifteen. I'm going back in memory, but that's, you know, sometimes it takes time and people, you know, there's a murder. Everybody wants it solved in a day or two, and it doesn't, doesn't work that way a lot of times. But I just want to say congratulations to the entire police department for a job well done.
Alderman Marzak.
I would like to follow that, you know, in regard to the police department. They're, you know, they're actively working on getting rid of some interesting characters in our town. There was a contractor that was defrauding a lot of people, and they did an investigation on it.
Alderman Marzak.
I would like to follow that, you know, in regard to the police department. They're, you know, they're actively working on getting rid of some interesting characters in our town. There was a contractor that was defrauding a lot of people, and they did an investigation on it, and right now there's a case and there's other people coming out of the woodwork that, you know, have been victims of the crime. So, you know, slowly but surely, I think we're moving in the right direction, and I'd like to thank the police department. Also, I had the pleasure of attending the Blue Mass at the courthouse that's put on by St. Pat's Church, and it was pretty moving. Officer Tyler Bailey, who was shot in Bradley, you know, he attended, and, you know, got to say it was pretty, pretty moving.
Any other Alderman? Department heads? Mr. Hoffman.
Couple things. If you'd like meetings, come join me tomorrow night. We'll be here for quite a while, I suspect. At five-thirty, we're going to be talking about the ward mapping that Alderman O'Zenga mentioned. Our game plan is we've got five different alternatives to kind of throw out to the community and get responses and reactions to at this meeting on Tuesday night. And the following Tuesday night, I hope to be able to come back with one that is the recommended approach and see if that one will work. And then we have a quite lengthy planning board meeting at seven o'clock here in the same space. Two conditional uses, one for a drive-through for our new Dunkin' Donuts down by the three-oh-eight interchange, and another for a renewal of a solar farm permit, three variance requests, and amendment to the comprehensive plan for the Greenwood Avenue corridor. So, lots going on.
Thank you. Mr. Biggitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates on our projects that we kind of have at various stages. This Friday is the state Hyde Outletting, which Hobby Avenue will be on, so we'll know who the low, apparent low bidder is for that. We will likely have an acceptance, not an award, but that the city will accept the low bidder since it's a local agency project at the first meeting in October. Francine Drive improvements are pretty much done. We've got some punch lists out and that still need to be addressed, but we're working through that with the contractor. East Ridge Drive is starting to ramp up. They plan on being there pretty much now until the project's completed, so they've really started moving a lot of dirt out there and started some underground. North Skylar is moving along. They've started on the three-hundred block on the west side this week. They should be pouring curb tomorrow for that, so we're moving along with that project. And then MFT will be probably reaching out to all the ward representatives next month to kind of start finalizing that program. We'll probably have an amended resolution from this year's program to reduce the authorized amount down, so then we can authorize it for next year's maintenance program, which we plan to have on council agenda probably for approval in December, so we can get it out the bid in January for start early, early summer next year. I plan on trying to schedule a traffic committee meeting. I've had several requests, I know, from some of the wards regarding traffic control devices, so I've kind of been waiting until we get enough to have a meeting, and we'll be coming back to the council with recommendations on that, so.
Director Brewer Watson.
Thank you. So I will get you all an email tomorrow with the applications for the improved property program, which is the property with a building on it, structure on it, and then also the vacant lot application. So as you get approached by residents, you can just send them the application, the instructions are on there, all the guidance is on the application, then they can reach back out to me. I just want to ask you to share with them, to be patient. It's not always quick to work with, with government entities, and I do anticipate we're probably going to have some zoning come up with some of these properties that we may need to work through too. So I'm just giving you a heads up that give them the applications and just, you know, ask them to be patient with us, but we will get back with them and bring all of those applications to committee, work through them that way, and get that going. So you'll get the applications tomorrow, and then please just direct them to me after that. Also, we are taking applications for reimbursement for the camera program again, so if people are asking you, just direct them to the website, and if they don't have access to internet or to a printer, that they can come to ECDA, we'll help them get all of that together for them. We will make a more formal announcement through all of our media channels right after the first week of October. So we're just finishing some things up and some reports this month, but we are taking those applications. We get them, and we're processing the other applications that were on the waiting list. We have plenty of funding, so please just keep sending those people to us as they ask you about the camera program, so. And thank you for sharing that information to your residents while we haven't gotten that message out there. We will take those applications, so, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. I just have a couple things. I do want to thank the council tonight. I think we took action on a couple items that are really going to help us, the city. The Duropatcher machine, the tar and chip machine, I think that's going to, I really do think it's going to be a game changer for us. It's going to take some time, as Director Brewer Watson just said, with the same thing with that. I'm sure we've all got stuff that we'd love to have fixed in the next ten days, but it'll take a year for us to kind of probably get it to where it's, you know, get everybody where they need a little bit, but thank you for that, because I know DPW's been wanting that for a while, so that should help out greatly. Also, for the passage of the vacant property and the improvement property ordinance, I think ultimately that's, again, that's going to do a lot there. It's going to add some revenue, it's going to take some, some of DPW's load off of them. I do think it's going to stabilize the neighborhoods in certain areas too, and I'm looking forward to continuing more properties that way. This past weekend was, I think, was pretty exciting in the city of Kenkey. I don't know if we've had, I was talking to Chief Passwater about this, I don't know if we've had this many events happening in one single day. Obviously, there was a lot of Aldermen attending a conference, but we, not only that going on, we had the Hispanic Heritage Festival, we had the Estival Festival down at Bird Park, we had homecoming at Kenkey High School, we had homecoming at Bishop McNamara, we had the Half Patty Festival, there was an event at the Knights of Columbus. Lot of things going on in the area, plus even, I believe it was Hopkins Park, had a very large celebration out there also. So a lot of things for a lot of people to do, but the majority of them were in the city of Kenkey, and so I think that it still speaks wonders that it was hard to attend everything, so it was spread out, but we had a lot of events with very little to no incidences that happened with the events over the weekend, and the weather was phenomenal. I do want to end it on, I do want to thank Chief Passwater, Deputy Chief Kidwall, and in particular Commander Austin and Sergeant Hunter for Detective Bureau. Under Commander Austin's lead, you probably saw last week, there were several arrests that were made in outstanding homicides in the city of Kenkey, including one that dated back to two thousand fourteen, one back to winter of two thousand twenty-one, and obviously the large one that has, they all sit with the community, but obviously having a young fifteen-year-old on Merchant Street that happened back in July of two thousand twenty-one. It was kudos to that department for, it's a slow process, and I know that drives the public nuts, but their diligence in keeping it open, I do want to give them thanks, as I said, they've, they've been working hard at it, and they've got some other things that they're continuing to work out, and so just want to give them a thank you for staying on that and pursuing some justice and some, hopefully in the future, some closure for the families, so. With that, we've got a lot of meetings coming up here over the next couple weeks with committee meetings, ward map meetings, informational sessions, so I know everybody's busy right now, I appreciate everybody's attendance, I know it's a lot, and the fall's always got a lot of things going on, and then we'll be into the holiday season before we know it, we'll be looking at Christmas lights, so let's try and enjoy ourselves a little bit while we still do our work, so. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn?